Shainer.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
O'Kane.
Here.
Can you stand for a moment of silent for followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your broad length for which it stands on the nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne.
Stephanie Pickenpong.
We have a proclamation that reads, whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, income levels, lifestyles and genders, and in fact is probably affecting someone you know, and whereas one in three women and one in nine men will be a victim of violence in their lifetime, domestic violence violates an individual's human rights by destroying dignity, security and self-worth due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological and economic control or abuse. Safe Place works every day to help end these acts of violence and help rebuild the lives of survivors. Whereas in Sioux Land, the Safe Place is available 24 hours a day, providing immediate response to nearly 2,000 adults and children in danger or in crisis, and despite increasing needs and diminishing funding, no one is in an unsafe situation was turned away. Whereas the impact of domestic violence affects all the members of the community and only a coordinated community response will put a stop to this atrocious crime and ensure funding is continuously available to provide these life-saving services. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa and Baff City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Sioux City, Iowa, and urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled events and programs and to think about the fact that it is someone you know.
President of the City, say any words of the Lord. Thank you.
Thank you for presenting this. Safe Place has provided safety and advocacy for over 40 years in Sioux City, and I would like to invite everybody to our D V vigil Thursday evening, 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Items two through 10, seek constituted consent agenda, consider them to pass unanimously. Any person wanting to speak on an agenda item, come to the podium as I read that item. Any person wanting to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns at the end of the meeting. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Two is a reading of the City Council minutes of September 26, 2022. Three is a resolution increasing the number of inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee members from 11 to 12, with the addition of a member that would represent the disability community. Four is a resolution adopting the third quarter supplement to the municipal code covering ordinances through 2022-0936. Five is a resolution proposing to lease certain property known as Riverside Recreational Sports Complex to the Arena Sports Academy. Tell us what we're doing today so everybody understands.
Yeah, Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. I just want to note, in the resolution, the wording is not exact. It talks about, it talks about the Hesse Foundation operating and managing Little League programs. They never led us to believe that they would be doing that. This is boilerplate language from past council actions on lease agreements. So I just wanted to point out the difference here. They want to use it for programming and for tournaments, but not specifically for Little League.
Is the, is the Arena Sports Academy and the Hesse Foundation the same? Because I don't like it is. So who's the lease to? The Arena Sports Academy or to the Hesse Foundation?
So the Hesse Foundation is...
Can you say your name?
Yep, sorry, Dustin Cooper, Executive Director of the Arena. The Hesse Foundation is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization, obviously affiliated with the Arena. What the Hesse Foundation does is fundraises throughout the course of the year to bring in certain events to the community while also scholarshipsing kids in the community for different programming. So the Hesse Foundation is actually the one that owns the lease with the Long Lines Recreation Center right now and is looking to do so with the S Y A fields as well.
Okay, because it's not reading that way in the, in the RCA.
I understand, and that's where I think some of the confusion is coming, coming from. Whereas I know that myself and other people are affiliated with both organizations and sometimes the two get lumped in together. They are in fact separate.
Well, the reason I'm asking is we historically don't rent fields to profit organizations. We do it to nonprofits.
So the resolution proposing, it says, "Resolution proposing to lease portion of real property at Riverside Sports Complex 100 Riverside Boulevard to the Hesse Foundation, DBA Arena Sports Academy."
Which is not correct.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking the question. I don't put the RCA's out. I'm just...
Correct. So we have another hearing on the 17th.
So we need to pick out the DBA.
We have another hearing on 17th, so when this comes back, we can correct that. Is that right, Nicole?
It may be cleaner to delete it and bring it back on the 10th.
Okay.
Hearing date to make sure that it's accurate, and then we can correct the heading to remove the little portion and add programming and tournaments to make sure that that is accurate.
But I don't care if the rest of the council wants to do it that way. I just don't think it's fair to give money to a profit organization, for-profit organization, when it comes to Parks and Rec funding like we do these complexes. That's where I've got a problem. If you guys are okay with them leasing it that way, that's fine. You can vote for it, and I don't have a problem with that. And if you're okay giving them money, but we don't have enough money for the Little League programs that are nonprofits, and then to bring in a for-profit one, just, it doesn't make sense to me, but I'm okay with whatever you want to do.
And for clarification, Mr. Cooper had said this. The other agreement with Long Lines is with the Hesse Foundation, and I believe they're also the carriers of the insurance which is required for the lease.
Correct.
And their intention is to have it under the Hesse Foundation?
Yes, so we can just clean up the language, make sure, because then it's going through a nonprofit. The language, it doesn't have the Little League side of it. And I think it's important to note also that 100% of the profits that we have generated thus far from the Long Lines Auditorium have either been invested back into the facility itself or utilized to scholarship children in the community for various programming. So whereas I understand the concern when a for-profit gets involved, that is not the case here, and we will do the same with, with the S Y A fields.
There's been a profit down there already?
Making a little bit of money.
And we have some...
We're also spending a lot of money on that facility, so.
I know.
We have some time to get it right because it doesn't start till November 1st, correct?
Yep, correct.
We'll bring you back.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know. It's not about making a motion. Anybody else want to be heard? If you want to be heard, you can come and be heard.
Mike Melanowski, 1709 South St. Alb. I'm the District Commissioner for Little League Baseball. I've been here before. I just want to make sure that the Little League name is not used incorrectly. It's a trademark, and it's very important for Little League and our nonprofit organizations because we've been nonprofit in utilizing Little League Baseball now for centuries here, and I think we've done a pretty good job. We're mostly all volunteers, and I just hope you take that under consideration, too.
And to answer that question, I think that, yeah, we would all want to make sure of that as well. And it's my understanding that you spoke with Mr. Cooper about that, right, and he doesn't plan to?
A little bit, yes, yes. We have, you know. I don't have any problems with, but it's, when we're nonprofit and they're a profit, that's tough. That's really tough.
And that's why it will be, yeah, through the Hesse Foundation and nonprofit. It sounds like we'll get that cleaned up and addressed.
Okay.
But I appreciate it, Mike.
All right. Thank you.
So, go ahead.
So Nicole, can you look and go through the lease agreement and make sure that phrase isn't in there?
Yes, and I think it's mainly contained in the headings and the RCA.
That's the way I read it, too, but will you kind of just do a word?
Yes, we will double check it.
Search, please. Okay.
Yep, and make sure it's correct.
And the Hesse Foundation now has to furnish a financial statement to the city for, so this would take care of both sides of the... I move, we delete.
Second.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shainer.
Aye.
Items 6A to C are resolutions granting permits to FiberCom to own, operate and maintain underground cable. Seven are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution approving payment to RP Constructors for the REV Aviation Emergency Waterline Repair. B is a resolution approving change order two and three and authorizing payment to Subserpico for the annual sidewalk ramp project I need to abstain. C is a conflict of interest. C is a resolution authorizing payment to Hydro Clean for the Southern Hills Drive Storm Sewer Lining Project. D is a resolution approving partial payment settlement and claim and authorizing payment. A to purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Centrifugian Pump Services for repair. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Landrell Medical Corporation for EMS mannequins and accessories. C is a resolution awarding purchase order to inspect medical solutions for EMS mannequin training items. D is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Cryotech de-icing technology for de-icing fluid. Nine are applications for beer and liquor license tenor boards and commissions and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those?
Mayor, I need to, on 9A, 1C, I need to abstain on the Soho renewal.
Soho?
Yes. 9A, 1C.
Passes 5-0, other than the items of conflict of interest. Appointments to boards, commissions and committees. Levin's a motion appointing Andrew Loswell to the Effective Fiscal Policy, Fiscal and Public Policy Committee to complete the balance of the three-year term expiring December 31, 2000. Passes 5-0. Twelve's a motion, motion appointing LaShawna Moyle to the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee to complete the balance of a three-year term expiring December 31, 2022, and reappointing LaShawna Moyle to the Committee for a three-year term. I'll move that. Second.
Passes 5-0. Thirteen's a motion appointing Andrew Gleiser to the Planning and Zoning Commission Board of Adjustment. I'll move that. Second.
5-0. Fourteen is a motion appointing Justin Johnston to Transit System Advisory Board. I'll move that.
Second.
The good news is, three really, I mean, Andrew's been here, but the other three are pretty much new, and they interviewed very well, which may be, that passes 5-0, hopefully a sign that people are coming out of COVID and will be willing to serve.
They're re-engaging with public interest.
Recommendations of Planning and Zoning Hearing. Fifteen's a hearing and ordinance rezoning 1819 Nebraska Street and repealing ordinance number 2022-0896. The petitioner is Sioux Land Youth for Christ. P and Z recommends approval. I'll move that. Second. Hearing is open. Anyone from P and Z here? No, because, any questions?
For the plate?
This is a lot legal, isn't it? Correct in the legal description?
Yeah, it looks.
Yeah, I know. I just want to make sure nobody has a question. Hearing's closed. Yeah, it is, does look like a great project.
Especially, I hadn't been up there in just a little bit, but close to that school as well and everything.
Passes 5-0. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? I'll move that. Second.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shainer.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Second, third, move.
Passes 5-0. Sixteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Tyson Events Center Audio System Renovation Project. I'll move that. Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. Seventeen's an ordinance amending Chapter 1020 Parking and Parking Meters. Chapters 10.24 Parking Violations Enforcement and Chapter 10.94 Municipal Parking Ramps and Lots of the Municipal Code to increase the ramp parking and parking meters and to increase the overtime parking fees. First consideration was passed on September 19, 2022. Second consideration was approved September 26, 2022, and I'll move the third reading. Second. Questions?
This is what we asked for from our public works team, to get something on the books for a scheduled increase so we don't run into this problem again in five or 10 or ever how many years it takes. So if you ladies would like to talk about how we arrived at that?
Yes, absolutely. I'm Tiffany Claiborne, and I'm the Parking Division Supervisor. And so Sarah had compiled, she, Sarah, actually, if you want to.
Sure.
She's the financial person, so I better let her do it. I'll do the part.
There you go.
Sure. Sarah Swarren, budget manager. Tiffany, Dave and I sat down and kind of tried to come up with a plan that would best suit. We don't want to push people out of the ramps if we make the meters cheaper, so we thought that the first step would be to increase the meters after we do our initial update here. We kind of looked at a 3% annual. With the way the meters are set up, we can't actually implement 3% each year. We would have to wait until we get to a number that would evenly divide for the minutes. So 3% annually, we would be able to implement in FY '27, and that would move it from 80 cents to 90 cents. So that, once we get that completed in '27, then we feel comfortable moving the ramps in FY '28, so that way we keep that balance and we don't push people out. So currently, that's our long-term plan. That does put us at a year-end balance of 741,000 in FY '28, so that gives us enough cushion to deal with anything that we find in the structural assessment.
Right, if we don't have anything major along the way, because, you know, there's always something happening. There's always lighting needs, security needs. There's all kinds of things like that that happen, and this way the fund has a balance being built every year.
Yeah.
And we're not surprised.
We kind of thought that as we got closer to the FY '26, that we would, you know, continue to reevaluate each year, as finance does anyways, and then come to you if we think there's any changes that need to be added.
So we will be looking at it every year as opposed, we're not going to wait five years and then look at it. We are going to look at it every September.
Right. So the increases are very gradual once you have them scheduled.
Right.
Anyone to be heard? Do you feel comfortable with the, with the program we have for making improvements in comparison to our parking ramps?
Yes, I do. Yes. I think right now is what we're doing. We're doing one project. Like this year, we, we did the security cameras, and then we're doing the elevators. So I think the, the future, in discovery this year, we're doing the lighting. We're looking at a lighting project again next year. So I do feel comfortable with what's been said.
About the surface area of the parking ramps? Is that needed an overlay or?
We are going to have them continually look at it, because I have a meeting, in fact, this week with, with them, just to see where they feel that the needs are going to be next year. Yes.
So it's ongoing?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. And then just one other question on the reserved parking?
Yes.
Had, apparently, and I don't know how often, reserved parking is used in ramps, but I think this applies to the parking ramps, doesn't it?
Yes.
Reserved parking?
Yes.
And it looked like before, an applicant could make a request for any kind of time period, but now we've changed that to a minimum of eight days?
So that's actually for the bag meters. So that is on street.
That's just the bag?
Yes. Yes, that's for, so the reserved parking is reserved in the ramp, but then they can do the eight days for the reserved bag meters.
But it has to be at least eight for it?
Yes, for the bag meters.
Is that, what's the reason for that? Because it could be bagged two days and then?
Well, is what they could do with the two days, they could just get the no parking sign instead of the eight days, because just the time that it takes for staff to go put the bag meters up and for just all of the processing and the billing for it.
Construction?
For construction.
All for, okay.
Yes.
For any of the bills? Mostly contractors buy those.
So typically, it's much longer than eight days.
When you get the, just the no parking one for like a day or two, it's like for a festival or something?
Yes.
Somebody, you want to block off the meters so someone's not parking
Yes.
the next morning.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you so much for all your hard work. That's
Thank you.
project. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead and get to your football game.
I will get to my football game. Yes, I will.
I'm abstaining for personal conflict.
Passes 4-0 to one, Mr. O'Kane abstains. Eighteen, an ordinance amending chapter 7.01 Definitions and penalties for the municipal code to modify the definition of domestic animal deferred from September 19, 2022. I'll move first reading. Second. First, after Steve and Christine Lowell will speak. She's put her name in, so go ahead. No, go ahead. You're first.
So just to sort of remind council where we're at on this, this amendment solely changes the definition of domestic animal to include effectively all animals, with the sole exception of hamsters, guinea pigs and fish. There was a discussion of, and currently also raising the total animal limit that one can have in addition to this change. The council can certainly suggest that. That would require amending a separate section of the code along with that. And if the council has direction on where they'd like to raise the limit to, again, currently it's three total, two species, I'd be happy to do that. I did, in addition this week, reach out to, hope I'm saying his name right, Jerry Dominacik. I think he's checked like me when I reach his name. I'm not totally sure, though. And, and he just gave some information from other humane societies in the area, other cities even I hadn't looked at. Council Bluffs is a four-species limit. Mason City effectively has no limit. Cedar Rapids, I told you before, the city does not have a limit. Actually, the county, Belen County, has a limit of six animals. No species limit. Sioux Falls has a total limit of four. And he thought that Vermillion was six total and then four species. Yankton was four total of any species under six months old. Cedar Falls, he said, allows three cats and three dogs. Waterloo used to allow four total of any mix. They recently changed that to four dogs and four cats.
Total?
Yeah.
So eight?
That, that's what he says. I just saw this this morning. I haven't had time to...
Des Moines with six?
Des Moines was in my...
I think that was six.
Original email on that. Six animals and a three-dog limit is Des Moines. And then Davenport was the other one with a restriction that had a four-animal, three-species limit.
This is just the first reading, is that correct?
Yes.
First reading.
If we change the number, that's separate, though, right?
Correct. And if there's direction to change the number, there are a couple of things. We could bring back a completely
Right.
new ordinance with those, so everyone would have the ability to see the additional change.
I think.
Because it's not included in this version.
Yep, absolutely.
Nothing I enjoy more than talk about animal ordinance. That is just something that has a way of brightening your whole week. Christine, come to the microphone. I have your name and address, and tell us what you want to talk about.
Right here, Christine.
Right here, Christine. There you go.
I've come to plead my case with you guys. I can't believe I'm doing this, but I feel it's important. I have come to ask the City Council why the ordinance is two dogs and one cat, or two cats and one dog. If the three animals you own are all cats or all dogs, why should it make a difference if they are all spayed and neutered? Not all people are dog lovers or cat lovers. I'm a cat lover, and when we lived at our address before we moved, we had two cats. This is before you came up with this ordinance. That makes me no sense. One day after a rainstorm, my husband found in our yard a tiny abandoned kitten, cold, wet and covered in mud. We took it in, then we had three. We had Sammy neutered at six months to join our two spayed females. Our neighbors never knew we had three because they never went out. Our problem in this city concerns spayed and neutered animals that are not spayed and neutered. I volunteer at the Humane Society, and each week I'm told by Kelly, the head lady, that people are leaving baby kittens or puppies at their door in boxes or even in totes with lids. Other people do worse, taking them out in the country and dumping them. The one we adopted from the Humane Society for my sister-in-law was astray. Now she's spayed. The Humane Society had picked it up. Our new kitten was dumped in the country astray, but a cat rescuer found her and gave her to us when we found out we'd lost ours at 15. She is spayed. I'm asking you guys to allow three cats or dogs per household on the stipulation that they are all spayed and neutered and certified by a vet that they are, and have cat owners in the city keep their animals inside and not let them run loose. They are made prone to get hurt or get killed when running loose or get pregnant if a female. If we were allowed to have three cats or dogs, more animals would be adopted out. Not all cats or dogs get along with each other if there are mixtures in the house. I agree with three yes, but please, let us cat or dog people have our three if we want, if vet certified, if they are spayed and neutered. Thank you for listening to me. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So we started a petition.
You got to, your name and address.
Oh, sorry, I forgot.
You're good.
Parker Moose, 4624 Harrison Street. So we started a petition here this week. We haven't had a chance to get very many signatures yet, but I'd like to point out the very first one, which is actually our neighbor who had called Animal Control and the police on us originally. We've spoken. There's no issue between us. He said that he doesn't have a problem with us having what we have at our house. The problem was when we had that escape, and it, there hasn't been an ongoing issue. There's no...
Parker, I'm really sorry. Can you move the mic up? Sometimes online, you can't hear it. I just want to make sure.
Okay. So I said that we spoke, my neighbor and I, and there's no ongoing issue. There's no continued nuisance. He says that he doesn't have a problem with what we have in our house. He doesn't care how many we have, and he was the first signature on the petition. So if you guys are going to be voting on it, I'd like us to be able to have a chance to get more signatures on the petition to be able to bring that forward. I don't know what kind of options there are for an appeal after the fact otherwise, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, what's the language of the petition? Like, what are you saying?
So it says, "We oppose the city's attempt to add additional restrictions in the number of animals a person may lawfully keep in their home by redefining what constitutes as a domestic animal. In addition to this, we request that the city additionally remove their per-household pet limitation based on a precedent established in the case of Commonwealth versus Creighton, Pennsylvania Commonwealth 639, a 2D, 1296 of 94, which established a precedent showing pet limitations violating individuals constitutional right." And that was that court case that I brought two weeks ago and gave each of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many signatures have you gathered?
So far, we just have seven. There, we gave one to Petco, and it sounds like they've had quite a few of their staff sign it as well. We've, I've been working until 10 or 11 these last couple of weeks, finishing up a house, so I haven't had the time to go knock on any doors.
Well, and just so you know, this is the first reading, so then if we choose, we can extend it out in additional weeks to allow for public comment.
Okay.
That would give you your time if that's what you request.
Yeah, that's what we'd like. Thank you.
Next, anyone? Next, anyone? You have some ideas, so we're waiting for your work.
Oh, my ideas. I thought we agreed to make that separate.
Well, I think you've got to give staff direction as.
Oh, right. I, it's going to be separate. My direction was thinking of increasing our number of domestic animals per household, bringing it up to six and no more than three of each species. So kind of giving people a little bit more leeway. I don't know if we can force people to have their pets spayed or neutered. I'm not sure about that part. I kind of, even what do you, do you know anything about that?
I'm not sure any other city does that.
Right.
Of the ones that we identified.
Well, I guess I was just thinking that our Humane Society, Noah's Hope, our Animal Control, do so much, you know, to advocate for the adoption of pets, whether it be, you know, rabbits, dogs, cats, whatever they are. And I think the ordinance has been the same for a while, so if we're able to adopt a couple of more, you know, per household or one extra pet, I think that that would be a service to them to loosen up that limit with the number that we're allowed to have in our homes.
Why don't you, why don't, I, I feel like four, but if you're going to allow six, then they, then to go above four for me, they've got to be neutered. I mean, you've got to have a neutered ordinance here.
Okay. And if somebody wants to propose five or something differently, that's, that's fine.
No, I, I can live with the six as long as they are neutered. I don't have a problem with that.
We just have to remember, it's not necessarily six dogs or six cats. It's, it'd be three birds or whatever that falls into that.
You still got the per species limit in there, obviously, then.
Mm-hmm. Yep, not changing that language at all.
Well, I agree that it just becomes, I don't know, pretty difficult to enforce. I'd have to have Stephen look into the legality of, of forcing individuals to be able to neuter their animals. I mean, I understand, I understand the premise behind it, obviously, you know what I mean? I, I don't want strays getting out, or sometimes even your pet gets out and, you know, can then become pregnant or impregnate a different animal. And then we have more, more trouble and more situations. I, I think we'd have to look into that. The other, I would want them to, whether they come and speak or have written, I appreciate you speaking. I know you said you spoke to Chris Wall with Animal Control as well as the Humane Society, it sounds like. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page with them and have any of their concerns, that those are at least brought forward. My, my stance is I always try to defer to Animal Control and these individuals because they're the ones doing the enforcement arm of that and having to manage these populations. So I just want to make sure that that part of it is explicitly in there as well. Whether they agree or not, we might not agree altogether, but at least then we would know.
I'll do my best to reach out to Chris, Cindy, or both this week. I did discuss this with Caleb, obviously, who's the one who prosecutes municipal infractions, and.
Yeah.
His opinion was, you know, there's, you know, some, some people suggest this can be prosecuted through, you know, just general nuisance enforcement. Caleb's preference was to have something more like this than, than just the general nuisance statute because that, you know, a little harder to make that stick when you're trying to enforce something like this.
Indeed. What was the city that had no limit? What did you say was that?
Uh, Iowa City, as far as I can tell, although now that I learned about Cedar Rapids, I'm curious.
Might be.
Uh, Johnson County has some regulations. I'm not totally.
I can't believe they don't.
Yeah, it's when it's an urban area like that.
But we, we already somewhat do control because we give a cheaper fee if you're neutered than if you're not neutered. So there, there can't be a huge problem with requiring, I mean, I, and again, I don't care if they neuter their animal, but they should have a limitation then.
Yeah. And I'm not saying I dis.
Their limitation shouldn't be the same number as somebody that has all neutered pets.
Oh, sure. So four if you have them not neutered and six if you have them.
Could live with that.
I'll, I'll look into that as well.
Okay.
This week.
Which, which one of our domestic animals are licensed?
Just dogs and cats.
Dogs and cats? Do we have a number of how many are licensed?
Oh, yeah, they know that.
Well, I'm asking if he knows it.
Not right off the top of my head.
Could you, could you get that number for us?
Sure, I sure can.
Those are licensed every year?
Yes.
It gets lower every year.
What?
It was?
It dropped.
During pit bull season as number of licenses sold in the city, and it's.
That issue.
Consistently dropped since that.
Because they know we don't enforce it.
When are they purchased?
They are calendar year, January first to December thirty-first.
Get a bill at the end of November and you got to pay it by January first.
Or the rates increase of.
On March, after March first, the penalties start applying.
But it's supposed to be paid in Mar- January.
Yeah.
And the other, I, I like the comparison with the other communities. What, the, part of the equation that's left out of that is what kind of problems and issues have they run into with animals and, and domestic animals? And I don't know how you'd get that without doing a lot more research, but it, it kind of leaves out the other half of the story.
You know, I was actually.
How we got here in the first place.
Yeah. I was actually surprised to learn, in, in addition to Council Bluffs, the gentleman from the Humane Society sent up this flyer from Potawatomi County, and actually, a lot of the small towns there have pretty restrictive animal limitations to at least on dogs. Just, I'm just going down the list here, like four dogs, three dogs, two dogs, four dogs, looking at towns like Crescent and Hancock, Iowa, and stuff like that, you know? And actually, three, three cities in Potawatomi County prohibit pit bulls, although I know we don't want to open up that can of worms again, but. It's, I, I guess I was surprised to learn that, that even the small towns are finding it appropriate or desirable to, you know, limit animals.
Have a limit.
And in my mind, the bigger the city, the, you know, the more it makes sense because the more people you have living in a confined space.
Right, because of density, right?
I think I have my orders for this week, so.
You'll be able to have that information next week?
Absolutely.
Just for clarification, the council direction, if we're looking at an amendment to the number of animals, that affects more than just one section of the code. I'm anticipating that there are other sections that will be impacted as well, so we'll need to have time to research the issue number one and then pull out the.
I was gonna, that's what I was going to suggest, is I'm not in a rush or.
Right, no, I'm not in a rush either.
That's why I was, that's why I expressed to you, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page before we're doing this. I want to make sure that we're as informed as can be, and if you need more time to do so, like, I would much rather give you more time.
Two weeks would be nice.
Yeah, that's great.
For two weeks. That's fine.
Well, I thought you said we could still do the first reading on this particular amendment.
This is only pertaining to the definition of domestic.
Right, it's separate.
Why wouldn't we want, I thought we could proceed on that.
I'm just talking about the number of animals.
Right.
That.
We're not going to include that in this.
Right. No, but we could proceed with what's in front of us now. Yeah, you could do first reading and then amendment, amend it.
He wants to do it.
Would you rather we delete and start over?
It would be best if we pass this. This is a separate issue that we're talking about, and that we're not actually talking about the agenda item any longer. They're two separate issues. One is the definition of domestic animal, which you could proceed on. The other is the, the number of animals allowed, which is a totally separate issue.
And would have two different ordinance settings on the agenda instead of incorporating them together.
All right, the first read we've done first, we'll just vote.
Who worry about birth?
I have the number of licenses if you'd like to hear it.
I'm worried about the.
Yes.
Currently, for two thousand twenty-two, there are five hundred forty cats licensed and twenty-six two, excuse me, two thousand six hundred sixty-four dogs. That's really low.
I was going to say, which is about probably a quarter of how many we have in the community, but.
Oh, probably less than that.
Yeah.
All right, years ago, I watched.
Nobody buys the, we don't enforce it. The only way you enforce it is if your dog gets out and gets picked up by Animal Control, and then they get to pay the fine and they get to buy the license.
How else would you enforce it?
And we never, well, you could go back five years ago when everybody was buying a license and you could.
Well, to be clear, this statute that's before you right now does not require any new licensure.
I understand.
We're just talking about.
I get that. I'm just saying that we never go back and say, you know, there must have been thirty thousand Fidos die, die last year because our, the licenses went down twenty-eight thousand or some crazy number. I mean, I'm just saying, we don't do anything to enforce it.
Well, is the ordinance a moot point, then? Is the number of pets per home a moot point?
Well, it's a moot point because we don't know what's out there, that's for sure. It's all on, until a neighbor complains, like Bob and I have been dealing with on one, until that neighbor complains, you don't know about it. Especially Christine's right, if somebody could have six cats and nobody would ever know it because they keep them in the house. What generates the notice of the reminder to renew?
If they're previously.
What gen, what generates the notice?
You get a bill.
That I'm not sure on because.
If you're previously registered.
Right.
Yeah, but that doesn't, but if, so if I buy a pet this year, I won't get a.
No.
I won't get a notice.
Yeah, you will.
Self-report.
If you license a dog this year.
No, if I don't license.
Oh, if you don't. Yeah, no, I don't.
You have to self-report.
It's all self-compliant.
Because I recently got a dog.
So that's things. Like the excess animals permit puts an unfair burden on the people that are trying to comply.
Yeah, right.
Well, and it's.
Because there's so many out there that aren't.
It's a safety thing as well. Like, I got Betty chipped and got licensed.
Right.
It's important to me if she would get loose, which she's a puppy, that could happen.
Well, well, the big thing with dog and cat licenses is we make you certify rabies vaccinations.
Yeah.
Right? Like, that, that's why, that's.
And you need to certify if they've been neutered. You have to certify that the first time.
Or, or not, yeah.
Yeah.
But like, but, but yeah, so that, like, that's, that's like one of the main reasons for the license in that case, you know, and we're not looking at expanding license requirements with this, just.
So are there any coordination efforts with the veterinarians in town?
They can issue.
Well, I'm asking the question because I thought there was something before that, Mayor, in years past, that there was some.
Used to be.
Is that what I'm thinking? There used to be a coordination or a.
They used to sell the licenses.
Cooperation, maybe?
Right, there was cooperation.
They won't do it anymore.
And to where it was.
Before the pit bull.
And to where it was much more affordable.
When what?
Because then they would get a number of vets together or something to coordinate that effort over the cost substantially.
I'm still just back on the basics. I'm just talking about licensing.
Oh.
I don't want to get into that other.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure it's any of our business, but I'm, I'm still thinking about that. But just licensing, there's no cooperation, no coordination at all.
Might be one left in the city that does it. I can't, I'm not sure which one it is.
Is that because it's unpopular to do?
Yes.
Keep it there, you're ratting it. It's, yeah.
And honestly, when it died off, when they all quit, was during the pit bull. When the city banned the pit bulls, then the vets didn't like it, and so they quit.
When the city banned?
Yes, yes.
But when we, when we repealed that ordinance and shifted the responsibility to the pet owner, what happened?
They quit licensing them altogether. I mean, it's dropped. Each year it's dropped a little bit.
Can they do that online?
No, there isn't an online application, but, yeah, it's more complicated than that, but we, we've looked into it. They mail it in, we mail it back to them. They don't have to come.
Like to mail things nowadays.
Well, I just want to reiterate, this is totally unrelated. What's in front of us here? We're not, we're not talking about licensing snakes or anything else.
No, but you've got to understand what you're doing.
It all works together, yeah.
I was going to say, y'all almost want something a little more comprehensive or at least think through all the different parts of it.
Thanks, Stephen. That's all I have for you myself.
Thank you.
We'll only do first reading of this. As we told Mr. Moose we would. Stephen, do you have to take off right after our meeting? Could I meet with you afterwards? Because, thank you. Oh, we're voting. So the motion is just what was presented to us with the definition of domestic animals. All right, thanks. What'd you name your puppy? Passes three to two, Waters and O'Kane vote no. Nineteen's a motion authorizing staff to proceed with the permanent removal of the East West Stop Sign of Twenty-Eighth Street and Waterfront Drive. Somebody else can make a motion for this. I'm not supportive of it.
I'll make the motion.
Don't understand how you guys can't wait until we open the jail and see what happens. I, I just don't, what's the rush here? That thing's been there for a hundred years. And it, and I don't want to hear anymore that stop signs don't, don't, don't control traffic, because if you really believe that, you ought to drive around because stop signs do slow traffic. You, you're going to make a freeway out there because of this.
Gordon Fair, city engineer, for you is the request to remove the stop sign on there at this location at the Forest View Mobile Home Park. We've done studies out there. We've done the counts. It is less than twenty-five percent of the volumes needed for a, an actual stop sign at that location. And it'll still be, continue to be that low at their existing numbers. When the jail opens up, the Law Enforcement Center and Mid-American opens up, we expect the traffic on that street to just about triple on Twenty-Eighth, not at the Mobile Home Park. We expect that to stay approximately the same.
Yeah. And so the reason for a stop sign would be if the intersection was experiencing a great deal of traffic, not just because the one street has an increase in traffic.
That is correct. Yes.
Again, how did we get the stop sign there, number one? Number two, how can you do a traffic study until you open the street and open the businesses and see how many garbage trucks start going that way again with a paved street because they're going to, they're not going to go all the way up around? And so the poor person that's stuck, lots of people come out of one driveway in that trailer court. The people that are stuck there can just wait until the traffic dies down. That's your answer. And I don't think that's the right answer. I think they have a right to get out in the morning and go to work.
That is a good question on that is the, it's, the, the through traffic is not the prevailing determining factor for that stop sign. It's the side street traffic, the one that goes into the Mobile Home Park.
Right.
So if the traffic can continue to go up, it's still not going to warrant a stop sign at that location.
My point is you're missing it. How do those people get out in the morning? How do the people like in my street, that when everybody's going to North House, you guys don't care if you got a forty-five mile an hour speed limit up there? How do we back out safely? You'll tell me, well, eighty-five percent of the people go that fast, so that's the speed limit. Some of the, the stuff that you guys come up with for safety, for people that have to get in and out of things, I understand, you learned that in school, but when you put it in practice in everyday life for people.
Actually, in, in practice, studies have shown that it is safer to do it without it.
Does it have to have a way to justify for stop signs to be installed? I mean.
Well, go to Cecilia, down in Cecilia Park, go down the hill. Lauren Calendar wanted a stop sign on that hill. It serves absolutely no purpose. Why is that stop sign still here? Where do you guys, I mean, how do you come up with, you're taking this one out? Who asked you to look at that? The county?
Uh, no, we looked at that on our own due to the fact that the street was already closed during this time period. And before it opened up, we wanted to look at all of that traffic, full measures.
What is Cecilia Park?
Well, no, and I'm, I'm agreeing with you. I think, I don't know about Gordon, but Dave and I have had conversations that he thinks the amount of stop signs in this community is just incredible, that there are a lot of stop signs that are unwarranted or would not meet the warrants.
But there are neighbors who believe they serve a purpose for them to be able to travel as you and I should expect to be able to. What if there's thirty people wanting to go to work and we've got all the Mid-America trucks, all of the jail guys coming to work? Then they just wait because we're going to, we just think it's so important to get rid of the stop sign? I don't get it.
Well, I'm.
Has the Public Works Committee, has your committee looked at that? Looked at this?
Yeah, we had extensive conversations, but we, we believe in the studies, I guess would be my answer. We believe in the research that shows you need to have warrants for a stop sign. And when you have something that doesn't meet the stop sign, it's actually, in my understanding, is it actually increases safety by pulling the stop sign because a lot of people don't know that that's there or believe that it should be there and find themselves running it. So then you actually put the people that are trying to get out of the trailer park in more danger. That was the conversations we had.
Yes, back in two thousand and seven, when we looked at this, the engineering section, they found that about two-thirds of the vehicles were not complying with the stop sign at all.
They're rolling through?
Well, rolling through would not.
Or just blowing it up?
Some of them are just blowing right through it. This is similar, very similar numbers to what we experienced on Country Club when we removed that stop sign. The one that was put in for the Country Club reconstruction. We were asked to put a stop sign in. We put it in for a year. We did a study on that. About two-thirds were not complying with that stop sign at all. They were just running it.
Which is making the people coming out of the Mobile Home Trailer Park have a false sense of security.
And traffic will speed up. When they have stop signs, they have a tendency to speed up afterwards because they feel that they're being left there. When they have stop signs in, they have a tendency to speed up afterwards, because they feel that they're being left there, right, they've lost time for stopping. These are not, my opinion, these are studies that we've had, that, that have been nationwide, not just here in Sioux City.
Gordon, would it, would it make sense though to wait till the, these facilities are open and we get a better picture of the traffic count?
I don't think it would, because we've done, already done a traffic study for those two developments. We've paid for those with, for Mid-American and the Law Enforcement Center. And it's not gonna make any difference, in my opinion.
Get any comments back from the Mobile Home Community?
Done. I've called, we called them, we've sent them a letter telling them about it. The only comment I got from them was actually on the phone, and they didn't, they thought they would, it would be better if they waited till when the street was open. But, again, that's not the number that determines a stop sign, it's the side.
Well, just don't pave that section of the street that should have been paved six months ago, and we won't have to worry about a lot of traffic going that way. That'll solve the problem. When is that gonna get paved? Cause winter is coming.
I've asked them that same question. They're, they're working on that solution. They just got a change order from the contractor today. And they're working through that. Just for your information, there's a seventy-foot section of roadway that is not paved, right in front of the Law Enforcement Center. Excuse me. And, uh, it wasn't paved because they didn't want to take the time, shut down that intersect, or intersection, driveway to the Law Enforcement Center. Cause it would slow down the trucks going in, the trucks that are delivering.
Engineer, the county engineer said they could have paved half of it.
After we talked to him about that, he agreed with us. We met him out on the field, Mark Now, and we met with him, and he agreed that it couldn't be.
Wow. So are you, are you saying there are more factors to take into consideration, other than the fact that we're not able to enforce the stop signs? Because people run the stop signs, we need to pull them?
They run the stop signs, they increase their speed after it.
It boils down to enforcement a lot of times, doesn't it? Or the lack of enforcement?
I wouldn't necessarily go that way. It's always gonna be that case.
People are gonna run stop signs. I have more confidence and faith in our residents, that they will obey the stop signs.
Well, we, we did, like I said, we did study at that same location back in oh-seven, and that's what it showed, and same thing on the Country Club.
And it's saying, the point that I, the point that I would just try to make clear, as far as what the research shows, is that it's when the cross-street increases, when the traffic on the cross-street increases. So in order to ever warrant a stop sign at that location, the traffic coming out of the trailer park would have to increase greatly.
By about five times.
Then it would justify a stop sign at that location.
My concern is, if, if you look, I mean, I've got the picture pulled up on, on Google. You, you can't see any traffic coming on Twenty-Eighth Street. So if you're, if you're stopping at the stop sign where you should be leaving the trailer park, and there's no reason for anybody on Twenty-Eighth Street to stop. If, if I lived in that trailer park, I mean, I would pull out and chances are I'd get hit. You just can't see, you can't see down the street at all, there's.
That's, well, actually, it's changed since then, since that picture. That street's been lowered about four feet in that direction, west side.
So what is, what about, what is the distance from the stop sign, if you're stopped at the stop sign of the trailer park, about how far down Twenty-Eighth can you see?
Uh, in excess of three hundred and fifty feet. Well, you know, long enough for stopping sign distance.
And it was lowered?
We did check on that.
Was it lowered for visibility was a part of it?
Uh, no, just for the geometric of the road, yeah, not specifically to that Mobile Home, no, we.
But it improved it at least.
It did improve it, yes. Or for the structure of the road.
And that's at the posted limit of forty-five miles per hour?
It's actually posted thirty-five.
It's thirty-five in.
Thirty-five.
If they go forty-five or fifty-five, to the point of running stop signs.
Well, you're always gonna get those people that, it doesn't matter what speed limit is.
And to be clear as well, the, the chief of police, as well as the. Support of this.
Both are in favor of removing it. The speed study we did back in oh-seven was actually showed that the speed limits, uh, the eighty-fifth percentile was three miles an hour over.
That'll change, do a study in a year after you open that and see what that speed limit is, cause that's gonna change. No question about that. Where is that?
Well, and hey.
Because there are only three miles, and once you take that stop sign out, the speed's gonna increase, and, and it'll be forty-five miles an hour next time. And then they'll say, well, you should raise the speed limit, cause everybody's driving forty-five.
Well, the good news is, I think that's the one street I definitely wouldn't want to speed on, with the number of vehicles that will be going to and from, but maybe that's.
We don't, you can't, well. Unless they got a radar gun, they, they're not stopping anybody.
Oh.
They're all mounted.
I do think, at, at the very least, it's something that we should reexamine, once the Law Enforcement Center is open. Uh, because that has the potential to, I mean, quadruple traffic, or, and, and it's, it's all gonna depend on which direction they're coming from, obviously. Uh, and they're coming from Sioux City, and then, then it'll go right past us, but.
It's expected to triple the traffic, but that's with Mid-American facility open.
With the Mid-American?
Oh.
Once Mid-American goes in there, then we're expected to approximately triple the current traffic.
Triple current.
What was the answer to your question, what triggered this?
I don't care.
No, what?
The we, we triggered, the engineering triggered.
You gen, you generated it?
No, his question, his question initially that Dan is asking about is why did the stop sign go in initially?
No, I, no, I was asking what triggered this, I mean, before us now.
That was, we saw it as an opportunity to look at this, this stretch of roadway as a whole, cause the street was shut down for this length of time. So let's check it out and see what we have. Cause when I drive that thing, I don't find it natural at all for that stop sign.
To Alex's point, what was the trigger that put it in? Do we know?
Originally, they requested it, and council agreed to it.
Today? The trailer?
The Mobile Home Park, yes.
At the time?
Yes. We recommend, engineering recommended against it, based on the same.
You know that for a fact?
It's in the memo from back in oh-seven.
What year?
Oh-seven.
Well, I hope this doesn't trigger looking at all stop signs throughout the community, cause there are stop signs that are up that the one, that don't.
If you have any that you know of that you, I'll, we will pull that up and put it in our traffic studies.
No, I'm asking, I hope that doesn't happen, because it seems like it's serving, it's, it seems like it's serving a purpose, Gordon. I understand what you're saying about what, what you have to do for the standards, whether the standards are met.
And it's, and it's not just for the standards either, it's, cause you, you have a certain feel on the road, when you come up to these, uh, these signal, or these stop signs in intersection, you'll, you'll come to some of them, you're gonna be like, why isn't there a stop sign here? Or why is there one? Just in the way it, it drives, the drivability of the whole street. It does for me. Wherever I go, I've noticed that in several locations here in the city, the stop sign is not correct.
Do we have stop signs along Hamilton Boulevard?
On the side streets, we.
The side streets?
Yes.
But, why do we have stop signs on those side streets?
No, it's not on Hamilton, we have to stop them from driving past into Hamilton.
Oh, I see, I, I see what you're saying, okay.
Uh, it should be known too, that there's been no accidents in ten years either, on that stretch.
That's good. Now we'll watch that one year, tell me how to take that out. Do a traffic study on that in a year, make a note to do that.
Uh, I wouldn't recommend a year, cause I don't think Law Enforcement Center will be up and running by then.
That's fine, I'd still like it in a year.
In a year?
Yeah. Gordon, are you? Are you totally opposed to waiting? I mean, you, you might have majority vote here with the council, but are you totally opposed to waiting until those facilities are opened up? Just to see what the patterns are like, and what the traffic's like?
In my, in my professional opinion, yes. I think it'd be better to open it up now, while it's, the street is closed. As Law Enforcement Center gets opened up, in this next couple of years, it would make, to me, more sense.
Thank you. Passes three zero Scott and Moore vote no. Citizen concerns, any citizen want to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi. How we doing, guys? Everyone? Guys, guys, everybody? Jeff Carlson, uh, six seven zero one Prairie View Court, Sioux City, Iowa. Not a big concern here, but just wanted to voice something that I hope would be, continue to be an open discussion, as I know that you guys have had to make, uh, decisions on parking ramps, and, and how those are gonna play out regardless of pricing, and totally understand that, obviously, we have not elevated pricing in a very long time, so that all makes sense. Just wanted to, um, state a concern in regards to there's pretty significant, uh, obviously development downtown, specifically near the Heritage Ramp, Discovery Ramp, um, and some of those, those locations. There'll be more businesses coming in there, there will be, uh, probably more traffic to that area. Uh, also, uh, not only representing the city center that's there, but also the Fort and Jackson, uh, condo owners and the businesses that are there as well. And so I just wanted to put it on everyone's just radar, or what have you, I'm sure that it is, that, that allocation of, uh, spots there for certain, whether it's certain buildings, certain projects, is a slight concern, uh, of, uh, you know, some of the business owners that are gonna be there, is there gonna be parking? Are they gonna have too many spots allocated in Heritage versus Discovery? Is there any way to, um, ensure that we can maybe, you know, mix those up? If that, if, if that will be, and so I just wanted to say, you know, again, no, not asking for any solution or anything of the, of that nature, but as we're continuing to try to grow the infrastructure downtown, as we're continuing to try to develop businesses downtown, parking's always a pretty big key. Um, and so just wanted to bring that up to the attention today, so.
The only other thing that I would just quick mention is, one of the things that we did was, we actually, um, changed the ordinance so that the two different ramps would be, that we would try to, um, encourage more monthly parkers to utilize Discovery over Heritage. Just because Heritage is in much more higher demand and more full, so then Discovery is much less. So if people can utilize that, we're trying to incentivize them to be able to use that.
Sure, sure. And I would just hope that, uh, obviously with, uh, awesome that we have so many more new units coming downtown. I'm not sure that, what the allocation is set for Heritage versus Discovery, but if there was an opportunity to potentially split that, or to look at how that, what that would look like, to ensure that there's more, more individuals that have the opportunity to purchase those monthly memberships, or have those monthly memberships, or, or at the Heritage Ramp, that they could do that, um, without them being fully, fully allocated to other, other spaces. So, if that makes sense.
Ed Moore, could we pass these comments on to Tiffany?
Yes.
Consideration. I think it may be difficult though, because if you've been parking there and you're willing to pay the rate, it's gonna be difficult to say, well, you have to move now. Unless, without doing a lottery or something, I don't know how you could fairly, I mean, I get your concerns, but.
I think he's also referring to the agreement with the Badgerell Building. Um, I think they have the opportunity to use.
That agreement does not allocate any.
Two hundred spaces?
You know, gives them the right to two hundred spaces, but not in any particular ramp. That's, yeah, we, we couldn't give them any in the other one, it's full anyway.
Right.
Alright?
So they already are spread out.
So it is spread out, there's an allocation, so other folks will have an opportunity to take those.
But not designated to any one ramp.
Gotcha.
I think that's what you thought.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Good, no, thank you guys, and, uh, good problem to have, hopefully they're all full.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name's Aaron Tyler, I'm with Keller Williams, one oh-three Virginia Street. Some of you may have seen my face on the side of that building across from the warming shelter, it's a fourteen unit. Uh, it's currently red-tagged and up for demolition.
Brick roll house?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I'm the famous guy there. So, what I'm actually, I have a buyer, and they're willing to, the current owners are willing to sell it. And the buyer just wants some reassurance before he moves forward with some things. I know you guys can't vote on it. Uh, what I'm coming here to do is see if there's any foreseen issues that you may have releasing the demolition order. I've already talked to Darryl Bullock, and he said, I've never had them, uh, I've never had the city council turn any down. If I have all the documents I need, uh, the work orders and everything. He's also said he's never had one this far along in the demolition order. And so I'm just coming here doing my due diligence for the client to see if there's anything that I need to bring forward, or bring in concern for you guys, when that comes, hopefully in the next week or two, to, uh, I don't know, the proper term, but release that demolition order, so he can rehab that building finally.
I would say that we rely heavily upon Darryl's opinion on that subject. And if you can convince Darryl that you have a legitimate buyer with a legitimate game plan, with a very, in that particular case, legitimate timeframe, because we've jacked around a long time on that building, that the, I don't know, I mean, I'd be supportive, I'd like to say that we need the unit.
I would too. Yeah, that's a very.
Just make sure your new owner gets a bigger garbage can than what the one owner has, because, you know, I drive by every day, and Jeff Hanson's getting tired of my text messages.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, uh, Mayor. So, that has been an ongoing issue, uh, we've doubled the garbage there.
Good.
Uh, I've also taken invested interest in cleaning that up myself.
I heard that.
Uh, on Mondays and Fridays, making sure it's cleaned up. So there was some management issues, and then some obvious garbage stuff, uh, the last two weeks, I don't know if you've noticed, I do have some pictures that places cleaned up a lot.
Yep.
Uh, we're also having some tenant issues of, I don't know if they're sending their kids out, and their kids can't get it up in the garbage can, but they're setting it next to the garbage can, so we're working on figuring out camera-wise, who's responsible for that. But, like I said, I'm driving by there almost every morning, and five to put the garbage in there I am, so, uh, that is being addressed. Uh, also have a junk crew coming to clean up a lot of the stuff out of there. Uh, we spent about, labor-wise, about ten hours cleaning up garbage over the last two weeks, cause when they leave it on the side, the dogs get in it, and then it blows all over. And as you know, there's a lot of people walking through there, that are leaving, uh, cans of certain beverages around and things like that. And we've also talked, I've called Watch Command and talked to them about increasing patrols about the homeless, and getting them out of there, that it's not a place for them to be. Just trying to stay on top of all those things.
Are they selling the places to the south as well? Don't they own those?
Yes.
Is it the whole thing they're selling?
Yes, and I have here, I don't know if you guys are interested in taking a look at it, but I have.
What's the exact address?
File together. Uh, that, there's multiple addresses, there's multiple buildings.
Right, what's one of them?
Uh, five thirteen fifteen Ninth Street would be the one of the parcel that we're discussing. So, the issue when you ask an address is, there's multiple properties on one parcel. So, that address of the actual brick building is the nine hundred block of Nebraska, but if you pull that up on Beacon, it won't pull up.
I just looked at that recently on Beacon, by the way.
Yeah.
I did, cause I drive up that street a lot as well. Now, your, your client does have a really solid plan, they've already given that to Darryl.
Absolutely, we're working on, he's meeting with Darryl in the property, uh, next week. And, like I said, if you guys are interested in some of the documents here, I've printed two copies for you if you want. Uh, so we've actually got the plumbing, the electrical, mechanical, and the construction bid all put together. We have that quote all put together, we've been working on this since about the end of May. Finding contractors is the easiest thing for that property, uh, so we've been doing our due diligence there. Also have, uh, secured financing for the total project.
That was gonna be my next question, that's gonna be a.
So I appreciate, you know, as far as hanging in there, we've done a lot of things, because we knew this was something that the city and Darryl and everybody else, rightfully so in my opinion, is not willing to move forward until somebody has that stuff squared away this time. Uh, I know it's been through a couple owners, and, uh, those documents weren't followed through as maybe promised. And so, I, you know, talked to the buyer and said, listen, these documents and everything has to be squared away. They have to know you're serious, so if you're serious, these are the things we're gonna need, and that's what we've been doing for months on end.
Very good.
Yeah, perfect.
Is the number of units and that kind of thing gonna stay the same?
Yeah, we would like to keep it fourteen units, absolutely, so, that's the goal. Anything that may be a red flag, or any concern for not having the demolition, if we come with all those documents Darryl requires?
I don't think so.
But I would think, uh, not, Darryl recommends it.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard?
Andrew Belasic, seven twenty-three Jones, Sioux City, Iowa. Couple concerns here, I'm restraining myself from talking about stop signs for the media. Um, I was just wondering what was going on with the Yamanashi Sister City Council and I wanted to express some concerns with that. Didn't really want to bring it up, kind of wanted to dance around it, but I was really frustrated immediately from starting it. After our first meeting, it was, um, by the Community Inclusion Liaison stated that Japanese and Chinese are the same, which, I don't know if that's, you're not going to feel very included if you're compared to somebody so distinct as yourself. So that was disappointing and I just felt, I don't feel much of a direction or passion there and I'm still happy to be part of it and just as it stated, in becoming part of it. Uh, Yamanashi is amazing and I love the culture and still want to push and that's all on that. Um, and then also I'm going through the same concerns. It's housing matter, I have court again and I'm a productive member of the society, Sioux City Society. Um, and I deserve better than a runaround. It's been suggested by myself and by others that I sue these individuals and this- And the last council meeting, it was that I was here addressing this issue, it was stated that this was not, um, an employee of the mayor's when, um, he, the employee of the mayor is the one collecting money for his father and the one who has been the most, um, to say it lightly, irritating.
I have no idea who you're talking about.
Yeah, that was, um, when I, I brought the court papers that, and they got thrown out that, uh, well, are you denying that Matt Toff is a worker of yours? That's what I'm talking about.
I have no idea who you're talking about.
Matt, I'm talking about, um, where I'm renting an apartment, seven twenty-three Jones, um, the Toff family.
Who's the guy you're talking about?
Matt Toff.
No, Matt Toff is an employee of mine, but he doesn't own the property, his father probably does.
He's the one that collects money on it and he works directly for his father and his-
Why am I supposed to control an employee that has nothing to do with his-
Well, if I hired somebody, I would not hire somebody that had poor ethics.
Okay. Go ahead, because your time's running.
Um, I believe I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, that's all.
Anyone else to be heard? Matthew?
I, um, just want to point out that piecing out the bid on eight B through C saved us almost twenty-five hundred dollars. So I don't know if anybody else is running the numbers, I know Julie likes to run the numbers, but I noticed that and, uh, and I was, I was pretty happy about that. That saved us quite a bit of money for, uh, the, the, um, I guess-
I noticed on the pump, it was actually a low bid, it wasn't a low bid because they did the memo wrong. Did that, did I get any credit for that?
I guess you did notice that. Didn't add up.
Um, and then there, there's two events, so tomorrow at Briar Cliff, um, in the Claire Room, starting at five-thirty, uh, put on by the Sierra Club, Great Plains Action Society and others, is the Prairie not Pipelines? So they're talking about community engagement, uh, with the proposed CO2 pipelines. Um, and all are welcome to that. There's also, let's see, Friday at eleven AM, the Bigger Together at Yummy Blocks, so there's-
There's what?
The Bigger Together, it's the big brother, big sister.
Okay. And where's that at?
That's at Yummy Blocks on West Seventh.
Peggy Law.
It's Peggy Law's, she owns it. Yep.
And it down from Omaha.
Where's that, at what time?
That starts at eleven.
Okay.
I have that on my calendar, I don't-
Don't we have a meeting tomorrow, too?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. ARCs.
Wednesday. Isn't there an inclusive? No, there's a- Differences Dialogue.
Is that it? What about the letter? I mean, have you polled the council about writing a letter in support?
I wanted to get some clarification.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. Julie?
Um, I don't have anything today. I know there's a differences in dialogue coming up on Thursday at six PM, third floor of the Arts Center. So you can get more information at our Sioux City Inclusive page.
Surprisingly, I have nothing, Mayor.
Really?
I tell you what.
You had a big trip and everything.
Fucked it all out.
Yeah.
Mr. Moore?
Um, this Friday, we have the Fall on Fire Fighters Ceremony here in the council chambers from three till four. On Friday, October seventh, I have nothing further.
Would you have Gabby put that on my schedule? Because I thought I was begone, going to be gone, but I am not going to be gone.
Friday, okay, yep.
Mr. Padmore, you can cancel my order.
Jessica sent us a deal about butterflies out by, I, what do we have to do to say we want that, Bob?
I wasn't included in any, I was going to say I didn't get, I didn't read it.
There are three locations?
They found a couple of city-owned properties that would work really well to, for bird habitat, butterflies, just kind of little miniature, almost nature preserve type things that have the, already the start of the correct grass there and they would incorporate some more milkweeds and things like that. I think one of them is at the, uh, the water retention on Floyd.
Right, that they just built.
For the new, yep, for the new, uh, Northern Crossing Development. And another one out on Outer Drive somewhere?
Yeah, I didn't-
I saw the map, but I don't remember.
Right.
Anyway.
Yeah, you'll get, you got the number.
Parks and Rec will take it over and mow it and they'll put some signage up and so it's going to look pretty natural.
Yeah.
Well, and I know they did that at Prairie Park, I believe.
Yeah, they did, yeah.
Planted butterfly.
Yeah.
Habitat.
Anyway, I think that's, that would be-
I'll, I'll follow it.
Pretty mu, pretty important to do that. I move adjourned. Second?
O'Kane?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.